Good evening, welcome to the Metfield School Committee meeting of Monday, June 8. We just come out of executive session to discuss the collective bargaining issues. The agenda tonight is reasonable for we have approval of May 18 commands. We go over the school improvement plans for Blake and Metfield High, a presentation on our new K5 math textbook, an update on the field study, accepting donations, and then Dr. Martin has a report for the committee. We dive right in with minutes.
We have the table?
Oh, we have the tables. They're motioned table minutes.
So moved.
Second. Favorite. For those that's unanimous, they're gone. Swan.
Good evening, Robert's first. Good evening. Welcome. So I'm excited to present our school improvement plan. I do want to first thank our site council and the entire staff through the collaborative effort in putting this all together, reviewing what we've accomplished this year and what we had set up to accomplish and maybe didn't accomplish, but then looking into next year to lie ahead. Really under the few thematic pieces that we're really looking at is our student learning professional practice goals in regards to student work, standards-based reporting, which I talked about a month or so ago here at the school committee, our organizational systems, and really looking towards a portfolio approach to measure progress for students. So kind of working through the themes, first theme under facilities, equipment and technology. I'll do a recap when looking ahead to next year. Most significant piece from equipment and technology and facilities is really expanding our iPad initiative from the Acre experience that we had last calendar year into all three grades. The issue's gone very well. Definitely had some bumps along the way, which were everything natural and some predictable, some not. Messy process, but it's gone very well. We also have the district and effectively restructured alignment in the roles of our tech integration specialists, really expanding our work at our library. And then a big piece too with the technology was transitioning to our new database of aspect to the student informational system and Gmail, switching that as a district, which definitely had its, our learning curve for all in the fall, kind of working through some of that.
Sure did.
But you know, we're in a really good place and definitely for the better for it. Looking ahead to next year, we have some facility, things that we're looking at really in our auditorium just needs some TLC. And really looking at some ceiling work that's going to happen right around summer. Actually, I met with Michael this morning, a little bit kind of mapping out for our drama program, looking at enhancing that auditorium and really making it better. Going to be painting the floors, doing a lot of work on the sound, we're excited about it. Also revamping our sort of media innovation lab and looking at our computer lab to be much more suitable for media presentations and really looking at some of the technologies that we've been using in a more productive manner, so we're looking at that. Again, working on our library and all of our facilities just to make sure that they're more updated to meet the kids.
Could you touch upon the makerspace a little bit?
Yeah, you bet. And so makerspace, we've been, those of Coalition's been unbelievably supportive as always in the wealth of CSA. And looking at a component in our library is a makerspace and it's really an experiential learning center for kids. Really some of it is things that are as basic as playing with Legos and building and having some tasks and orienting kids with that, but also looking at circuit boards and technology, looking at our STEM work in for technology engineering. So we got a bunch of different tools that the kids can use for that. And actually, Orona Corp has been great about working with us and we have a student focus group looking at what might work for it. So that equipment's been coming in and it'll be designed for kids to be using through typical classes, like the science classes, math classes come on in, but also during advisory and after school as well. The whole intent is really to get kids to experiment and to really, you know, in a way play. Because I think that's something that's lost and really looking at bringing that in, so we're really excited about that. You bet. Looking at curriculum assessment, big thing that we're doing that I know the district looking at is aligning our math and English with a common core. We expanded our co-teaching models to all three grades in English and math where we have dual certified special educators and regular educators in English and math in all three grades to really service the students in a more appropriate and more really equitable model for this degree. Continued our work with our homework study group to formalize the exam and homework practices. Also, and this touches on a number of the themes, but our Anti-Defamation League World of Difference Leadership Program for this year, year one of it, and we're expanding into next year. It's been phenomenal to see the eighth grade and seventh grade leaders really work and they've done a lot of work with our sixth and seventh graders as well. We also expanded, looking at again some of the technology pieces. We had hour of coding endeavor that included all students, which was really successful. That really helps spark our student groups with the Tech novation Challenge, which was really under the idea of girls in coding. And we had two teams and Marty Heim and Diane Horvath were phenomenal about helping lead these students forward and they ended up being named finals, which was just an amazing accomplishment for them at the Microsoft Nerd Center, which is really cool. One of the best things about it, again, this touched on a lot of themes, was these girls were not a bunch of girls that you would have put together necessarily, that they had very different interests and would not have necessarily connected naturally in a way, in very different circles. You just see them come together for a common interest, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And they presented at our faculty meeting last week and it was just great to see them have that experience.
They were funless nationwide, right?
Looking ahead to next year with that, some of our working with portfolios, looking at that. We are going to be piloting co-teaching in Spanish classes, which is something that we're really excited about because that's an area that I don't think our, some of our students haven't given enough support in some of our world language classes, we're looking at that. And I mean enhancing our response intervention protocol and that couples with our work with our curriculum accommodation plan and our student support team as well.
Now, yeah, in terms of homework and the homework group you have, can we talk a little bit about that? Because we know it's not, Mr. Blom wants to read homework.
It is not.
Sometimes I hear that.
Yeah, well, and I hear that often today. It's really, you know, it started about, really, this is our second year of formally meeting and homework's always a topic and I have felt as though we do give busy work and I think we have to really look at that. And also, a lot of it has been with the integration of technology too, kind of thinking about what do we want really kids to learn and exit school and how purposeful are our homework practices? So it's a group of teachers that we've been meeting bi-weekly or every third week at the longest stretch and really started just talking about it and we have a cross-section of teachers and the voluntary and we meet in the mornings talking about it. And really this year we expanded more to do a lot more, lending that into our faculty meetings and our professional development work to talking about what are some practices we're going to try and see what it looks like and how effective that is. So I think one goal is to reduce homework for sure, but it's not to get rid of homework. I think there is purposeful and practical work, we've got to make sure that's what it is. Some examples are, you know, for math, the kids don't necessarily need to do 35 problems of the same type of concept. If they can do six to eight and understand the concept, we're in good shape. And I think we just want to make sure that we're doing that and differentiating. It does concern me anytime I hear that a sixth grader's spending upwards of two hours plus a night on homework. That's a lot of time after a long school day. And then I think that's a piece that, how productive is that time? And is it their time or is it their parents or tutors working with them on that work? And how valid is the information we're getting from that? So that's some of the things we're really looking at. Looking into student life, our acceptance was our theme this year, which we tried to cross all sections. So we're continuing, next year will be collaboration and trying to make sort of a progression with our different themes that they do tie together from community to perseverance to creativity to acceptance and then to collaboration, so that they're themes for our school. We are hoping to really expand that work that we've done with our ADL team, our leadership team. We're excited this year that the Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service was expanded for blood drive and really student-led blood drive, it was very well, received very well attended, so that was excellent. So we're hoping to do that, you know, and thinking about how can we broaden it outside of Blake to do some things within the community, just the Metfield community as well, outside the walls of Blake. We administered our student survey and parent survey that we do each year, really looking at that to have a good pulse on where we're at. Continued dialogue along those lines that Dr. Mars just talked about, it's really related to student stress and homework. So I think that's something that we, you know, we're looking pre-K through 12 as a district about student stress and what does that mean? Can we really, beyond just talking about it, try some things and think about what that looks like? You know, again, I'd like to highlight over the past couple of years, our participation with the Special Olympics has been great for our students and really our peer students that have been working with the kids in their adaptive phys ed class as well, attending at halls and high this year, it was really fun to see. Looking ahead to next year, we want to really do a good kind of reconsidered focus on our advisory program, which I think we have a very healthy advisory program right now. I think we have to sort of start with the proverbial good problems of what to do with advisory, because we have a lot of ideas going on with that and I think sometimes, sometimes at late, I think, and I tend to sometimes have a hard time saying no to a good idea. So we really, I think, need to focus that program and make sure that we're not trying to jam too much into it. About, you know, I would say about eight years ago, maybe longer, we had a problem when I don't think all staff were on board with advisory. We don't have that problem now, I just think we have probably too many good things going on. So we have to make sure that we're not trying to do too much and watering down some of the programs. Student connectedness is always something that's very important. You know, we do a survey with kids each year to figure out, to get a sense of, is there an adult in the building that they would feel comfortable coming to with a problem, either big or small? And it doesn't really matter to me who it is, but can we name that? And then taking a look at those kids who really don't have an adult and what is that behind them? Can we take a look at, are there some themes to look at? And then idea that came up from our site council was, is there a method that we can look into for capturing the involvement of all the kids at Blake? And sort of behind the scenes, just kind of get a sense, maybe some of those students just aren't involved? And is there a way that we can mentor them and foster some more connections for kids? Because it's very clear that when you're feeling connected and relational with kids, it's going to make a difference on their learning, so that's important to us. So, you know, again, looking at the student anxiety is a piece too as well, that really couples with that student stress. Personnel and professional development, we had a number of teachers get their certification for the SEI retail class for sheltered English immersion for our ELL students. Administrators were part of that as well, so that will be expanded into next year. Had a number of conferences and workshops that teachers went to. Digital Learning Day, I thought this year went really well as a district, it has in the past. I'd like the fact that we broadened it to having neighboring communities come too. And I know we've been talking about as a district to do that more, because I think we have both a lot to gain from others but a lot to really teach others too. And then, you know, the professional development too, the teacher evaluation, you know, we're in year two of this new system and next year we're expanding to standards three and four as well on that. So that's a big part of our professional development and working along with that. You know, the other piece that I think that we have talked about and worked with Corey Jacob, our special ed coordinator, is doing some more professional development specifically on special ed processes for our staff and making sure that regular educators understand the processes behind it and how we can improve that. I am excited that we're going to continue to be looking at the standards-based grading. Sixth grade science team's been expanded into all year next year. And then I've had some conversations with different content of trying, what it might look like in another grade as well. Not necessarily for a full term, in some pockets, to get a better sense of what that looks like. And we have some good times really examining that. You know, school management, the fifth theme, really, you know, I've said in the past, really want to maintain the middle school model. We have declining enrollment coming up, so we're really going to do a real concerted effort starting this fall to get a cross with that really meets regularly looking at our master schedule. I think we have to adapt it and we know that that's coming, we want to be ahead of it and do adapt for it. We've also did, I think, which we can do better in, work with Matt LaTobert, increased professional development training for our aides. I think sometimes they're, you know, forgotten and we have to make sure that they're in line with what we're doing. Looking into next year, I also want to make sure we're reviewing our crisis response protocols. Want to also review and revise our formal and standardize our system for consult meetings for kids and for teachers. And then communication, community outreach, you know, this year we did a lot, talked about student achievement recognition and how we recognize kids and talk about, is what we're using just a tradition that we've maintained forever? But is it still relevant and is it working? And really overarching pieces, is it in line with our mission statement? Think about our honor roll system, you know, how are we recognizing students? And are we casting a wide enough net to recognize kids? And we want to make sure that we're doing that in a thoughtful way. It was great to have some Metfield High students come to a student panel, a parent panel, find out their experience as well. And I think that was something that we started to do more on. I think we can just do more of having the high school kids talk to middle school kids about their experience, because they're going to listen to them far better than us. And it's real authentic, to get a sense of that, the more we can do that, the better. Continued our work with the veterans around Veterans Day recognition. Our guidance counselors, you know, this year formalized their parent copies and I think we can, you know, think about the model the high school does with that. I think it's been a good model and Stephanie Werth has done a very nice job kind of helping to talk about what that might look like at the middle school as well. Kelly Romenski did a nice parent presentation on study skills. I think the more parent ed we do, the better, engaging that, and we've done that with technology as well. We also started to do some teacher and kids Skype with other schools. Kind of established partnership with Wellesley, who has similar initiatives going on, having kids collaborate with one another, but also teachers too, to learn from one another. And then thinking into next year, we are going to be, we just got the results from MetWest Analyst Health Survey, so we'll be doing a forum for our staff, but also for parents as well. Thinking about piloting a sort of a book study group with parents, you know, with any adults that would want to be on it from the community, but also, I'm sorry, adults on staff, but adults in the community that would like to look at that, kind of bridge some of the ideas that were together to increase that communication. With that homework study group, Jeff, one thing that came up was inviting some parents to that as well. And it's a real open discussion about some things. Some parents expressed some interest too, so looking at that. And I think the other thing under really communication outreach, which touched on student life, is really looking at our resource that we're providing for parents and the community, through our website, through our guidance department and our school psychologists for mental health resources, student parent workshops, stress relief, healthy relationships. I think we can do a better job providing those resources and utilizing that outreach. And then the final thing I just want to highlight is, we just recently started talking about engaging some of the high school help desk students, of what that might look like at the middle school. And for that kind of model, but also not just for us to have a help desk, but having those high school kids partner with some of the middle school kids. We are very fortunate to be on the same campus and to utilize that, I think would be remiss not doing such. So we're looking at that. So, you know, Rob and I have talked about that and we're excited about looking at that as we move forward. I definitely just hate to miss the opportunity to thank our whole staff, you know, I'm biased about everyone and excited about just recognizing what we're doing. We're going to be taking a lot of time reflecting over the next couple of weeks about things that have gone well, things that haven't gone well, setting some goals for next year. And also just want to, once again, thank the CSA and Coalition for their amazing support. We're able to do a lot of things that we wouldn't be able to and it's been, it's been great. So I'm looking forward to the event. Any questions at all?
Yes.
I know I talked quick to.
Thank you, Nat.
Sure.
We appreciate all that you do. I have a question about student surveys.
Yep.
My children don't talk about them.
Yep.
And, but I'm just wondering if there are open-ended questions and are there big themes that come out of this that you're recognizing?
Yes, so the surveys that we give, and the site council helped develop it, this is our fourth year of doing it, they're actually the, basically the exact same question they're giving to parents.
Oh.
But it's sort of a mirroring of it.
Yep.
So, you know, it might say, how much time do you spend on homework? How much does your child spend on homework? So what's hard, to be very honest, to quantify though, is we don't get 100% response rate on parents.
Yes.
So not necessarily the parents and, I mean, we get 100% on kids. So sometimes the data does align, sometimes it doesn't, but it's been very interesting looking at. I think kids definitely have said they feel supported at Blake, which is very positive. I think stress and anxiety definitely is there, you know, and that's definitely a big piece of the theme thematically. The connectedness piece is still there, that I think overall it's very positive, but we still may say like, okay, 91% of the kids feel connected at Blake. That's a great number we look at, but when you think about 9% don't feel connected, that's about 55 kids. And if you think about 55 students coming to school not feeling connected, that's worse. And feeling like, also the peer relation piece, I mean, again, most kids report that they feel very comfortable at lunch, they have a good place to sit, but you know, anywhere, any kid, you don't want to feel uncomfortable coming to school. But the percentages, even 5%, you know, we're talking 25 kids that are coming to school every day not feeling ready to learn and not feeling safe. So that's something we want to really look at thoughtfully. You know, I think that we get some positive feedback about the different offerings that we have. I think there hasn't been anything overly surprising. I will say, this year we added more open-ended questions, which is a blessing and a curse, because some people just take the opportunity to give whatever feedback, even have nothing to do with that question. You know, so, you know, you have to kind of, but that's also information, you know, at least we know what's going on there. And some of that too is sort of encouraging. I think there's definitely always very hotly debated iPads in middle school and that's a distraction. And, you know, I would be silly to say it's not, but I also firmly do believe, I'm an idealist, but I also think this is the good years to help teach them. If we can help shape those good habits before habits are totally done, I think that's a piece too. And also it was a learning curve for us this year. We have, I mean, we met today as a sixth grade team and Diane Horvath talked about how can we better roll it out and make sure we're doing it in a thoughtful manner? So those are some themes. I think that's a hard thing for parents to, and I recognize that with my own children, that it's a distraction. But I also say the iPad did not make middle school boys distracted. They have been distracted since then. I mean, to be very, I mean, very honest, I mean, their binders were a total disaster mess beforehand. So it's not the iPad. Do I think that it makes it a lot easier for them to be distracted? You bet. Do I think sometimes kids are gaming in class? I do. I mean, I think, but we have to just kind of work on that.
Which leads to my follow-up question about the one-to-one.
Sure.
I've seen the benefits from it, from my own children. What are the teachers, what's the word on the street, especially from the eighth grade teachers who have now, what, had it two, three years, three years?
All, eighth grade have had it, all of them, this is their second year, some of them this is their third year.
Yes.
If they were a pilot cluster. I think they're thrilled by it. I mean, to be honest with you, I think what it comes down to is sometimes saying, well, what if we didn't have an extra load? That'd look like, and it's kind of like, I can't imagine not. From a exciting piece of teaching and enhancement, but also, I mean, there's the productivity and efficiency aspect. It's been amazing and the communication with kids, I think also coupled that, having their email accounts and looking at that, it's been amazingly efficient to see the collaboration on that. Do I think that we're still in the learning curve? Yeah, but I hope we always are in that learning curve and see what it looks like going forward. I think sixth and seventh grade teachers, it was the deep end of the pool of jumping in. It made it a very messy start, what that looked like. And there were some challenges that we had with transitioning to Gmail. Also transition to the student information system, that was messy and it wasn't to no one's fault, but that was a lot kind of taking in, so we want to make sure that we're thoughtfully looking at it. Those surveys from parents and kids have been very helpful too, that we're seeing some progress.
So back to those surveys, adults, anonymous surveys, other than kids? Oh, so you can't target which kids?
Right. Yeah, I mean, so that's what, you know, because I think if we have the names, I don't think we're going to get the same kind of candor that we get. And that can be a hard piece from some parents too, because parents, it's anonymous too, which I totally respect and value, but then sometimes some things are written, you know, I just kind of hope that they would reach out and ask. The student connectedness survey is not anonymous, so that we really can get a sense of who the kids are.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Reach out, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, you know, and what we did too this year, which I think was a good thing to talk about, we didn't initially, if kids did not put an adult or said they didn't feel connected, we didn't make outreach to parents to talk about. Because I think, you know, that can be sort of a hard conversation, but you know, as a parent, I want to know that. You know, absolutely, looking at that. And some, you know, when talking to parents, it might make sense. They said, you know what, I'd go to my pastor, I'd go to my this and that. And that doesn't still mean that we don't want someone at their, at school to feel, they might feel, okay, but if something did happen, is there an adult that you might feel comfortable going to, whoever it might be?
And you know what, I think the teachers at Blake, at least in this first year that we've had at Blake, the iPad has been almost a great way to connect, because they connect so much through technology. They can shoot out an email at ten o'clock at night if something's bothering or an issue that they might not want to be seen in a hallway, you know, talking to a teacher, pulling a teacher aside, because then five people are on, that'll go, why did you just go up to her? Why did you say, what did, you know, what happened? So I think that has been probably one of the positive sides, a huge positive, to connect with teachers and people at Blake.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's a good point, you know, because I think actually kids are just so vulnerable. I mean, I think all kids are vulnerable, middle school can be more heightened with what's going on than developmental. So I think, you know, the social media thing is, whether we have the iPads or not, those issues would be going on anyhow. And so we have to kind of look at that too and work with parents too.
I just had a couple of questions now.
Sure.
On the homework, has there been a lot of talk about using the classroom to cut down on the?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, and I know.
Experiment with that or?
Yeah, they have, I think certain teachers have definitely been doing it more. You know, I know one that comes to mind, which I think, you know, Aaron Carney uses it a good amount, Marisa uses it a lot. Math has been very helpful, Brenda Proff, he's done a great deal, Nancy Woffen has. I've been looking at that and, I mean, it's a lot of work on that kind of upfront work, but it's been great, because I think then when they come in, we get a far better sense of how to use it and that's productive time too. I think, you know, a big piece with that homework, with that flipped classroom is also looking at making sure that that's real productive time, you know, but at the same time, we don't want to make it that they have to learn it on their own, because it really shouldn't be for that kind of practice review or extension, what that looks like.
And I personally want to thank you for a whole mess of things, you know. This is the first year I've had two kids in the same school in their careers. Half of every parent who sends a kid to DC, what a great trip. We really appreciate you on that. I don't know how parents managed when their kids were away with it before Twitter.
Exactly.
But, I mean, teachers not only did a great job of kind of updating, but it seemed to me from everybody I talked to, you knew your kid was going to be pictured twice a day, you knew where they were, you knew what they were doing, very comforting. Probably it'd be better for everybody if we just cut the cord and didn't hear from them four days. But that's not who we are, so I, it was, we really appreciated that. And I think, you know, you've done a lot at Blake this year about parent meetings and trying to get, for instance, I'm always embarrassed that I can't make them, I work in Boston, but I think it's great and I, you know, I don't know what the turnout's been, but I think as you continue to do that, there'll be much more culture of attending. Because, you know, whether it's training on Twitter or talking about, you know, changing assessments or how we recognize kids, you know, there's a whole gamut of opportunities for people to show up and I think the more you do it, the more they will. And I know it's a lot on you and your staff, so I appreciate it. And last thing, as a former special ed teacher, we're sitting around the dinner table tonight and kids are talking about their friends and it really struck me what an inclusive middle school you have for kids with disabilities. When I taught, it was elementary and I always wondered where my kids would end up when they're in middle school now, but, you know, whether it's at concerts or in the play or in cafeteria or in the classroom, kids, you know, see their peers or disability as their classmates in a way that they know what happened 10 years ago, I don't think. And that's real valuable to you and your staff, and we really appreciate it.
Thanks a lot. Thank you. Thanks, Nat.
Good evening. I'll take your theme from yesterday, Chris. You know, times have changed when the Microsoft Nerd Center sounds really cool. I'll learn more about that. Well, first of all, good evening and I first want to thank our site council at high school for their help in creating our improvement plan. One of the little differences between the middle school and the high school site council is that I have students involved, so I have a couple of students on the committee and they're just fantastic. They're great resources to really get to pick their brains and, you know, kind of get a good understanding of what they're, what they're hearing on the street, that's what they tell us a lot. But certainly their fingerprints are all over the school as well, so I want to thank them specially. So I'll highlight a few things, looking at some of what we are hoping to accomplish next year. We'll start in the theme one of facilities, equipment and technology. Obviously, we've talked a lot and heard a lot about the field study, which it sounds like you'll hear a little bit more later. We're very excited about what that will hopefully look like soon. We are believing going into year 10 in the fall, or 11 of our current fields though. We were one of the first schools in the area to have curb and I believe, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, other than Westwood, other than Hopkinton, I believe every school in Tri-Plata, we now has curb. And Hopkinton is by choice, have a very large campus and they're able to maintain a stadium with grass. But obviously creating a facility for our student athletes is important. More so, as Dr. Mars and I have been talking about, creating a rural center for the community as well, where they bring in, you know, the cross kids or the soccer and perhaps even football. So I'm really excited for what that entire project will encompass, including a new track. Our track needs to be redone as well. So we'll also look at possibly a field behind Blake, which many of our sports teams use for our practice facility. That becomes almost unusable during the rainy season and so perhaps we might be able to have a really nice complex for the kids in our school. So I'm looking forward to this, working with Michael and athletic director Scott over the next few months for our field studies, hoping to make some good progress with that, so we're excited about that. Also, under this category, as you know, Chromebooks are coming to Metfield High School and we're excited for seniors, our seniors are excited for themselves. They have, I've been hearing for a few years, you know, when we first started one-to-one a few years ago, it kind of came out and said, well, in year two, we'll have our freshmen and our sophomores and that's when the current junior class picked up on that right away. You know, like where they started in the math and they realized we were the gap class. That wasn't going to get anything. So we've worked really hard in making sure that going into September next year will be one-to-one in grade 9 and 12, which I'm excited about. Our teachers who teach, seniors have been working with that tech teacher over the past year in preparation for teaching in a one-to-one environment and we're excited for what that's going to look like and bringing those devices into the school. So we are in the process right now of reaching out to families, communicating with them. We'll have some digital citizenship work for them to do as well and we're just looking forward to seeing what those devices can bring to our seniors next year. So that's something that we're really excited about.
So Robert, are you going to do the online, online courses like you did before?
I don't think so. Neil Sonnenberg, who's our, he worked with. Neil Sonnenberg, who's our, he works with technology in our school, he and I felt we might not have gotten a lot of bang for our buck without last time, so we might want to do more face-to-face stuff this year when we go back. And so, there might be a couple of components over the summer, but we think a lot of it's going to be more face-to-face. Let's do some loopholes around the online stuff, we want to have those direct conversations with them. Another piece at the high school that we're really looking forward to, and I will tell you right now that in no way, shape, or form, and I am an expert in what a library is, and what a library should look like, I should say, but certainly by the end of next year, I hope to be. Our library right now is 10 years old. If you've walked in our library, you know it looks very traditional, and I'm not entirely certain that it meets the one-to-one needs that our students have going forward. And we're looking at collaborative spaces, you know, that whole idea of you walk into a library and you're quiet, and you don't say anything, that's kind of gone by the wayside, where now it's sort of a hum of student productivity and collaboration, and creating working spaces for our students that I can share resources and collaborate and work together. And right now, we don't have a setup for that. I've visited a couple libraries this year, but along with our librarian and a couple staff members, we're going to kind of hit the road next fall and really look at some schools that have changed their library to meet sort of the needs of students right now. And so that's one thing that I'm very excited about, and hoping that a year from now, we have a pretty good sense of what we want to do with that library. Our library has been purging books over the past six months or so in preparation for what a library with fewer books will look like. Obviously, we do more with digital content these days, and we have books in our shelf that literally haven't been moved for six, seven, eight years, so we're identifying which of those books are no longer used by students, with the hope of recreating some, or capturing some space that, that we'll be able to better utilize. So, more to come on that one. I'm looking forward to at some point next year, giving you an update on where we are with our study. Moving on to curriculum instruction and assessment, always like to share the new classes that we're offering for next year. As you know, we do a program and studies review each year, where we look at the courses that we're offering, we look at trends and themes, and certainly what students are taking online for VHS and tech, and look at courses that we're offering that students just aren't signing up for anymore, and kind of replacing those. So, we've got a number of new courses next year. Mandarin Five is a continuation of our Mandarin program. It's hard to believe that we're going to have students joining to their fifth year of Mandarin now. So that's really the last class of Mandarin we'll offer, short of an AP course, which at some point down the road, we may be able to have as well. But Mandarin Five will be coming to the high school next year. Stress Management is a new course we're going to offer. Karen Rayno and our wellness department are working on this curriculum right now. This came from a lot of our surveys, Metro West Health Survey, just really trying to understand sort of the needs of students, because she's been working on that curriculum. AP Economics and AP Art History are two new courses that have really come from data we received from our online students, very similar to AP Environmental Science, which we offered this year. There are about three or four years we had close to 20 students sign up for AP Environmental Science, but we brought that into the high school and it's been successful. And Economics is a course that students who are interested in taking online here, and we're going to offer that. Actually, we are going to have run two full-year sections of that next year, so that became very popular with students. Guitar is an exciting class. Doug Olson proposes, he and I have been talking about this one for a while, and it's the, and I should have brought the wording of our, that we have in our program and studies, but it's really for people like me who don't know how to play an instrument, and want to go and just sort of embrace and understand the ethic and what an instrument can do. And he's very excited, Marko, not that we're going to be working with him as well. That obviously became very popular with students. And AP Composition, which is another course, but one of the things that you'll notice in our new course offerings, and we've talked a lot about this at the leadership level of experts, making sure that every new course offering isn't an honors or AP level course. We want to make sure that we're still providing other experiences for students, AP and honors level courses, which just aren't for everyone. And sometimes we get excited with some of these neat opportunities for students who want to experience an AP level class, but we have to remember that we need to make sure we're bringing other courses as well, to ensure that we have a well-rounded program to study for students. So, very happy with what we have put together for next year, and of course, signups have been an indication that students are excited about them as well. Right under that, exams. So exams have been a big topic here for a few years, and we spent a considerable amount of time this year in professional days and faculty meetings, talking about sort of the purpose of exams. You know, in my travels over the last few years, in PTO meetings and games, and, you know, my advisories, certainly the stress that students feel around exams comes up always around that, you know, end of January time when we admit here, and, you know, we're getting to exam final week for the next couple of weeks as well. It's been about seven or eight years since the high school's really been looked at exams, and so we really kind of jumped in, I'm very proud of what the staff was able to do, encouraged by the conversations that we had, and we really talked about the purpose of exams, and are we using that data to really drive our instruction? That was at the end of the day, the big point for us. And in some cases, we absolutely are, and were and are, and in other cases, maybe not so much. One of the things that I also did around the time we were working as a, on this as a staff, was I, amongst my job alike, about 13 high school principals, really just tried to get a good sense of what everyone else was thinking. And all but one school, literally, all but one school in the area is still offering exams, and the idea behind it is still the belief that they still offer value, they still provide good data. Though many colleges and universities are kind of back and up a little bit from exams, there's still no doubt that they value an exam, and they understand how to study for an exam, and the benefits for our students going on to the next level. So, we're all sort of believing that, and then when we looked at, sort of, we actually put the exams up on the board, and there was such a huge discrepancy between the number of exams for freshmen there compared to our seniors. And if the idea is we want to give these students this experience before they head off to college, then in theory, our upper class should be taking more than the freshman, and it was actually the opposite. So we have ninth graders coming in who really don't have that experience of an exam schedule, walking into seventh grade, or seventh final exam, and seventh mid-year exam. So, we're changing that for next year. English and social studies will not be administering a mid-year exam, and biology will not be administering a final exam. Our students take the MCATs, biology, in June, so we felt jumping in a couple weeks later into a final exam seemed overdone, so we're going to eliminate that piece as well. We're also going to add some more of our elective exams back into the senior schedule. So, over the past couple of years, what had happened was, in an effort to sort of back off exams a little bit, we really went far to the left there, and our students were walking out here with taking one and two exams for the entire year, our seniors were. And so what we wanted to do was kind of recapture some of that time with them as well. So, we're very curious to see how the lack, or the cut down a little bit in exams for our freshmen, how that impacts them. I'm really, what we've determined as faculty, we're going to take a year to look at it. My sense is that this is just the beginning, and perhaps that there'll be fewer exams for sophomores as well. Walthall High School actually is the only high school in the area right now that has eliminated exams completely. But they're in year one, but so we haven't, they didn't have any data for us to look at, but everyone else is still...
When you say exams, does that include midterm exams as well? Okay.
Yeah, so part of the, part of the problem with mid, with exams for semester courses is when you give the exam, you don't have the student in or to really use that data and drive the instruction. So what we ended up doing was eliminating those exams for those particular students. What we want to do is replace them with more, more frequent, shorter assessments along the way. So for, I'll take our English department for example, so instead of giving a big mid-year exam and a big final exam, they're going to give a series of shorter exams throughout the year, not give a big midterm, and actually that last exam will just be that last exam, that last period assessment. So, one of the interesting things that are both our social studies teachers and a lot of our English teachers felt, was going into a mid-year exam, they could almost predict how the students were going to do on the exam. And they felt, gosh, they lost a lot of classroom instructional time in preparing for the exam, administering the exam, and they were excited, they're excited to recapture that classroom time back. So, so it was, it was something that, you know, we had talked about, we've looked at in my, you know, four years now as principal, in the last couple of years, it really just started getting to a point where we really needed to just take some professional time and really look at what we're going to do on the exam. So it was good work, and like I said, adding some final exam, more final exam experience for our seniors who, like I said, some this year were taking just two, I think is a move in the right direction for that as well.
Robert, is that because they're taking AP exams, and then they don't take exams...
No, it's because most of our seniors take electives. And we sort of eliminate a lot of the exams from the elective schedule, so they would just exempt from the elective, so they just weren't given that experience the same way. So, that's what we're going to, we're going to add those back in. So I will, I will certainly report back to you on that, you know, as we, as we go on through the year. I'm very curious to get the experience from the freshman, from the English and social studies teachers in terms of what their experience is like without administering a mid-year exam. Like I said, my sense is they're going to feel as though they still have all the information, all the data they need, and then we'll begin looking at what we want to do with sophomore and freshman. Moving on to student life, as you know, you've, you've approved several trips for next year, which we're excited about. And one thing just stood up to me, and I wasn't going to mention a whole lot about this today, but we had a faculty meeting today, and what we've been doing a lot with our faculty meeting is bringing students in to present, and we've done faculty showcase, and developing where teachers present, but our students that went to France presented, and the question, the big question was, what did I learn about myself on the trip? And then we had some of the most fascinating answers from the students, and it made me realize even more so that's why we talk of these international experiences for students. The students talked about the confidence they have now, just to be away, the courage it took for them to kind of go to another country and not quite have a handle on the language, but new enough to have to get by and to make small purchases in stores, and they really just talked about coming back with a renewed sense of confidence and accomplishment for being able to go away for, you know, eight or nine days. So, that what did I learn about myself piece was really, sort of, it really helped for me today, and I'm looking forward to our trips next April, we're sending students to China, to Italy, just staying with them, so.
Yeah, Robert, is there, everyone, will there be an option, or maybe throwing it out there, because most of these trips are for juniors and seniors...
Correct.
For the younger kids, just based on what you've said, because I used to work in educational travel, and that, you know, I've seen 10-year-olds go, I'm not saying we should do that as a community, but the younger they're exposed, they just gain this earlier confidence, or in terms of, I went to France when my French was rubbish, but I went and I thought, I got, I got excited, and I wanted to work harder. So, I'm just wondering if that would ever be an option? I don't want this to turn into the haves and the have-nots, and every year there's a trip, and that's stressful for parents too.
Right.
But in terms of more opportunities, maybe Montreal, maybe, you know.
Yeah, it's nothing, we haven't talked about it, but that's not to say we wouldn't. I know, I mean, first...
I didn't know if it was a rigid thing, junior, senior, home, or basta.
It kind of has been.
Yeah.
That's not to say that we wouldn't look at that differently, but, you know, I know when we started our China trip, our first trip we sent to China, we actually had eighth graders...
Eighth graders?
On that trip.
Awesome.
Now, that was, the program was in a different place.
Yes, yes, yes.
It was, you know, primarily a program from middle school and just a couple of classes, but I think the population was at a... Developmentally, it worked. I have a seventh grader at home, and I can't even imagine sending him to China, but it did work for our eighth graders that, that went. So, you know, to your point, you know, certainly...
Just more opportunities.
The opportunity, correct, yeah.
And opportunity for growth.
Right.
Within that, that, you know, I get it, I'm going to work for it.
Yeah, yeah, no, good point, and certainly, certainly, certainly we can, you know, talk about with the world awareness department. Metro West House Survey, Nat just alluded to, we just got the results, so that's something that we're going to be looking through in terms of the data, we'll be making a Zoom presentation in the community at some point, that we share with faculty and students as well, and so, we literally got the binders this week, so that'll be something that we'll be working through. Going to professional development, one thing that we, we start to do more of, and again, it's with our teachers growing from an instructional technology standpoint, is offering after-school workshops for teachers, and they've done over well, and Neil Sonnenberg has done a nice job of just offering an array of, of offerings to teachers after school. What's been nice, you know, Nat talked a little bit about our health test, students have been coming in to help out with that as well. So that's been something that we'll continue to offer. We always forget that learning to teach with this technology is obviously new for our teachers, it's something that they aren't accustomed to, and providing them with as much professional development as we can in those areas is important, and Neil's been fantastic in just offering mini workshops for them after school from time to time. So we're going to continue those workshops. Moving on to school management and leadership, one thing this summer, I'm going to be working with a couple of local high school principals, is the possibility of creating study groups at each school that we can use to, to share ideas and collaborate. So if you take the idea of what NEASC has, which they do a large, pretty significant site visit, the piece about the NEASC accreditation process that I find incredibly valuable is the self-assessment, the reflection that you do at the school, and, you know, results in some standards. My issue philosophically, and Jeff and I have talked a lot about this, is, is as we are right now, we are sort of held to standards that were given to us eight years ago. So, one-to-one wasn't really known eight years ago. So I struggle with those standards, knowing how much education has changed. So, what I've talked to with a few high schools is, you know, identifying three of our folks from Medfield High School, and a couple of local high schools will identify three to four teachers, and create a team to go into each school and do an assessment and report back. So I think that that type of feedback would be incredibly valuable. Schools that are very similar to us, I think, would be able to offer a lot in terms of what they see, perhaps what they're doing, and I think it'd be incredibly valuable for those teachers that are on those visits as well. So it's just something that we're brainstorming, we're looking at. I've talked about three principals right now that seem to be on board, it's going to take a lot of work and coordination, but it's something that I'm hoping perhaps by the end of this school year, we might be able to be on the receiving of a visit, I'm very kind of well into this process.
I think the key point that Robert brought up, and he and I have talked a lot about it, is the like schools and like districts. So when you go through the ASH, folks come from all different places, but it may not be a community like Medfield with the same types of issues. So I think that Robert's done a real nice job of reaching out and trying to coordinate this, so that when you look at communities that are around here that are having some of the same issues, like stress and that close type of thing, how are they handling that? How are they doing with aligning the math curriculum, grades eight through 12? Are they doing something with algebra, or are they not doing something? But having those important conversations with like districts and like schools is extremely beneficial, so I really applaud Robert for doing that, and look forward to some of the data that comes back from it.
So, and just in, in terms of our last theme, which is communication, community outreach, we do offer as many copies and opportunities for parents to come in as we can, and a lot of it is done through guidance, they give terrific job of meeting with families and doing it grade by grade, preparing them for the following year. Stephanie Workley, who's our six through 12 guidance coordinator, does a fantastic job of really lining these up for families, so we're going to continue to offer those. And technology workshops for parents, they were incredibly successful this year. Again, you know, our parents of our students have, you know, went to school in a obviously a much very, very, very different learning environment, and providing them with those resources is important as well. So we were grand, I think, three Google workshops for parents, they all sold out, and we had our health test students, there are a couple of teachers, and the community was very appreciative of the wealth, so we're going to continue running those types of workshops for families as well. So, again, I want to thank our site council for their work, thank you, the school committee for all your support, and I have a very quick question.
I have a question about Aspen. I'm not there yet...
Yes.
But I've heard stuff, and I'm wondering, and so I'm wondering, how's it going? Because I think you had, there were bumps, like anything new...
Yep.
At the beginning.
Yeah, a lot better. As, as, actually, when we were looking at site council, one student said they hated As, as, actually, when we were looking at site council, one of the students said they hated it. It was worse, we hated it in September, and now they've kind of figured it out.
Okay.
I think we all agree, you know, at least administrators, the launch was, was a difficult one. We spent a lot of time preparing and transferring data and meeting with the Aspen reps. And the launch just didn't do as we thought it would. Parent access wasn't what we thought it would from the get-go. We're getting there. And, and the feedback I'm getting now from families is it's more than what they thought it would be. But it was a rough, what was it?
Rough September, rough August.
So you're going to have a train.
November, October, November. Yeah, I think it was about December when things started to, we started feeling good. And now, you know, everything is done electronically. Our report cards are done electronically. Parents go in to see the portal. So, you know, we're not, I'm trying to think of what we're mailing home these days. I can't think of anything. I think the last thing we mailed home was actually the password for Aspen. Ironically, we had mailed it home. Everything is done electronically in Aspen, it's very good.
So there'll be a train for coming, not great.
Yeah, it's actually, you're friendly. In the district I live in, they use it. And that was my frustration, I know what it looks like, but couldn't get it there. And it just, it took a while, but it's, it's in good shape now.
Robert, I love the collaboration with the other like schools about how to improve things. That's always, that's always impressive. And it's super impressive that you just added exams into seniors and you didn't miss a beat. So that was super impressive that you're taking exams away. But I do think that that is really important, because as much as there might be some pushback from seniors, I imagine if I was a senior, I probably would.
Not a lot. They're getting COVID.
But it is true, that's the way things work, you know, when they get to college. So I think that that is.
Well, one of the things that we did, we talked to, especially this time of year, our kids are back now. And you're always talking like, what was that freshman year like for you, were you prepared? They always come back with a positive experience for the most part. And I never get that testing question and they felt they were prepared, they knew how to do it, they knew how to study. So there's still value in it. You know, to the degree that we were doing, especially with the freshmen, I don't think, I think we're overboard there.
I agree with every, every babysitter, anyone that we've had that has gone on to college, I always ask them what they thought about their first year. And every single kid, whether they're going to an Ivy League school or some other school, every single kid has said that they felt so prepared for college when they left Medfield High, so.
I think it's like everything, there has to be a balance, you know, and I think providing the students with those opportunities is important. Completely eliminating or completely going 100% in the other direction, maybe not the way to go.
It's great how Susan Cowell and the rest of the health team had come up with, you know, all those electives within the, within the health program. I know my husband, who teaches at Needham, sat there at that incoming ninth grader and thought, what, they do all this and maybe, you know, it's amazing, it's great. And I hope that will help address, there are kids that are stressed out, but then they leave happy. Because graduation yesterday, they were happy, you guys did a great job, you know, so thank you.
They were very happy, they were very happy. Yeah, we had a faculty meeting today and it's, it's a lot of work and a lot of people. A lot of people put just so much effort into, you know, going all the way back to the middle, you know, last week, all the senior events. But it is, I was right at the staff meeting last night and it's exhausting, but it's so.
All positive.
It's just so fantastic.
And they're great kids. I mean, even cleaning up at 4:30 this morning at all night grad, kids, can I help you? Can I help you? Oh, thank you so much. Holy moly, this is for you, you know, but great kids, so.
They are, they are, we're lucky that they, you know, all the way, gave you all. Yeah, we get you kids.
We do.
Robert, can I, on the library, mentioning your light transition you're talking about? I know you're just starting to look at it, but is that something we're going to be thinking about capital budget for?
I would think so at some point, yeah, yeah. My hope next year is to kind of really have that figured out. And then, you know, it would definitely be something that we look at. That would take significant work in there.
You're not holding your number, you're talking like on the order of $5,000, $8,000 or $500,000?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we're going to do anything structurally to the room itself. I think it's a lot of furniture that we don't have. And repositioning things and, you know, I'm thinking the circulation desk where it is now is probably worked well a number of years ago, but now that's like the center of the actual room. You know, and so something along those lines, so.
And I mean, I know it's been seven years since NEASC was here. We were there here, I guess, two years ago for the five-year check-in, but.
Correct.
My, my memory, library seems to be a hot button issue for, for a long time. It was a hot button for me. Have they sort of evolved to a point where they'll accept this kind of?
Evolve?
Evolve, just look where it went. Well, I know. I mean, I hate to have you go through all this and have them, even though we're confident about it.
Yeah.
Me, I would say, which is accreditation.
There are some, there are some standards that I struggle with. I really do. Standards that made a lot of sense seven, eight years ago. So the word evolve is one that, you know, we'll probably stay away from for now. But, you know, as we've talked about, I think that we have a pretty good sense of, of what's best for this learning community. And my communication to them has always been that the local community should always have a lot of say in the type of learning environment they want to create for the students. So, and that's not to say we're going to completely disregard their standard of recognition, because some of them are very good. But there are other things that are important to us here. And I don't want to risk lowering the bar to some degree here for the sake of a blended recommendation that was good a number of years ago.
And NEASC has gotten a lot of pushback from communities. I mean, they, you know, as Robert alluded to in terms of evolving, they need to change their standards. And what we're doing as a school district that's mandated from the state and the federal government has raised the bar dramatically, and NEASC needs to catch up with that a little bit. So I think they've, they've tried to do that. They've heard, they went on a listing tour last year and they got a lot of feedback from all of us and they're going to make some changes. So hopefully by the time they, they come back, some of those changes will be implemented.
So I'm going to, I met with them a couple of weeks ago, just to give you an update on this since I'm here. They, we took a pass on some of their recommendations during their last, the last reporting period. And, you know, as a community, learning community, we just decided that those just weren't meeting our needs. So when I met with them, we met with them a couple of weeks ago, we agreed to sort of update sort of our progress in terms of how, they're a big piece of how we're assessing students. So we shared with them what we're doing, they're very happy with what we're doing. So we're going to document some of that stuff, submit that to them in October. And then we'll determine whether or not we're going to go forward with the next steps, which would be the, being ready for the preparation.
I hear from so many parents that there is an increasing reliance on tutors. Do you have any sort of data about how many of our students are getting tutors or gone?
I don't, I don't know that we have that, because I assume so many do it on their own without even letting us know. Probably something we did for the survey. We wanted to look at that.
It isn't, yeah, and the numbers lower than we had thought.
Really?
Yeah.
The interesting thing, though, is, as you know, the SAT has changed. And the SAT changed philosophically because they felt that they had created an assessment that students could be coached to take. So the new SAT really de-emphasizes the rope and the memory. They were obviously seeing a very big, what they felt was a big difference in scores between students who had access to tutors and students who didn't. So the new SAT, which has created a new PSAT, which is something that our juniors are going to be dealing with, our sophomores as well, is really designed to focus on different types of skills. And the emphasis and the, the college board's hope is that the reliance on a tutor isn't going to be what it was before. So that's all new, so we'll see how that impacts us. But we don't have, we don't have data, because like I said, a lot of students, they don't know. But it's probably something to connect.
And then on the, this was the first, our first year already, you got in the, in the fourth, like, the first year of the Life School classroom, can you talk about?
Yeah.
How that's worked and what's going to happen next year?
Yep, so we have three students right now who are in our Life School program. Two of them from Medfield, one, actually, we have four. One of our eighth graders is transitioning, transitioning over about halfway through. It's been fantastic for them. We have a star who's teaching that course, she is unbelievable. And it's gone as well as we thought it would. The students and, you know, they have an opportunity to take some elective classes with the general population, which has been fantastic during the lunchroom with our kids. Just a little feedback I've had from the families, they're very appreciative and excited for the program itself. And I don't know the exact numbers for next year in terms of what might be coming from out of district, but I know we'll have a good force of people working next year and possibly more.
The capacity's ten, is it?
It's eight.
Eight.
So we're looking at bringing students from other districts in as well.
Tuition, is that tuition or swap with other?
Tuition. So it's going well. It's kind of very.
Last thing I want to say is, first of all, we went to church yesterday, which is why it was so sunny today. But he was, he should have given that where suns can speak.
I'll give you the date for the next graduation, make sure you put that, monitor it down there as well for that Sunday morning.
I, I just wanted to say I really appreciate being able to be a part of it. It was so, such an honor to be part of, such a joyous occasion, first, it's great kids.
Thank you, thanks for being part of it. It was, it's always a fantastic event. You know, you pray for good weather and you get that and so that just kind of takes off. And the kids, the kids make the event, I mean, their speeches were unbelievable. The national anthem, we were talking.
National anthem was incredible.
Of course. That young lady is Julia Flutker, is one of the Syracuse University students. And she was, she was something else.
I'm sure she warmed up, but, you know, back in high school. But when you're on the field and you're there for 45 minutes, so, and they just walk in and she just felt so like, you feel like she just kind of walked up and did it without any kind of warm-up. I'm sure that's not what happened, but.
Yeah, that was, that was quite a, quite a rendition as well. She's very talented. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
Thanks, Robert.
So we need to vote to accept both improvement plans, is there motion to approve the Blake School Improvement Plan?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both unanimous? Is there a motion to approve the Medfield High School School Improvement Plan?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Could we plug in for a sports thing?
Sure.
Big day today, baseball won, so they're going to the sectional semifinals, which is the first time in a while we've gotten that far. So I think they're playing Thursday. I didn't get any test results, but my phone's been buzzed, so it might be, it might, it might have gotten it. And Boys and Girls Cross are playing here, went to.
Doubleheader.
Doubleheader.
What's that?
Five and seven. And so they're both number one seeds, so hopefully they can play off run alive.
Thank you.